To tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting, first order of business will be the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. If you'll all please rise. Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Dr. Mary Jane Ledgerwood, and if you'll please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. With St. James Episcopal Church.
Yes, it's a privilege to be back here again. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, in your word, you have given us a vision of that holy city to which the nations of the world bring their glory. Behold and visit, we pray, the cities of the earth, especially right now, Fair Hope. Renew the ties of mutual regard which form our civic life. Send us continually these honest and able leaders. Enable us to eliminate poverty, prejudice, and oppression. That peace may prevail with righteousness and justice with order, and that men and women from different cultures and with differing talents may find with one another the fulfillment of their humanity through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Ledgerwood for that invocation. Appreciate that. Council, first order of business that I'd ask you to take care of tonight is to amend the agenda to add the resolution that was discussed in the work session, and that is the resolution to provide odor control at wastewater transmission station. That would be to install an outdoor control unit, it says Wager, I don't know if it's Wager or Wagner, model 2050-450 to reduce the odors in and around the twin beach lift station, et cetera, et cetera, at a cost of $10,450. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda to add this resolution?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. That would be added as item 21. If so approved, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of amending the agenda as mentioned, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay. The agenda has been amended. Thank you. Next order of business would be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings held on July the 22nd, 2019. Do you have any additions, deletions, or changes to those minutes, council?
I recommend approval as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion to approve as submitted and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor of approving as submitted, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. I'm not sure if Joe got my presentation because I never did get a response. If he'll let me know. I can do it without it, but I did have some slides. Okay. Well, first, I want to take this opportunity to introduce a new employee. Okay, here we go. I want to introduce a new employee. If you can come up, Hunter Simmons. I will tell you that we searched far and wide for Mr. Simmons, and I'm really thrilled that he has joined the city, and it's been a couple of weeks now. And his first work session with the planning commission was a big one, and he came back to work the next day, and so we're thrilled. Anyway, but what we wanted to do when Wayne Dias left, our planning director, who did a really, really wonderful job, we wanted to concentrate this last year with the upcoming comprehensive land use plan and the so many projects that we have in the works, to have kind of a division in the planning department that takes care of the current business and then somebody else dedicated to working on strategic planning for long-term planning in our future. So, Mr. Simmons is now our planning and zoning manager, and Buford is now our development and services manager. Both are the leaders of this department that will help us build a roadmap for the future, and I appreciate you. Thank you. I will mention that he is in the planning, he came from the planning department in Mountain Brook where he was, he won the employee of the year last year, and he came really highly recommended, so we're just excited and thrilled to have you. This is something we talked about during the work session, and as a business owner, you know, one of the biggest things in our business, and one of the most important things is really good quality customer service, resolving issues fast and in a timely manner, and just really going over and above the call of duty. And I do believe that we're really doing that within the city, but we haven't had really the tools to implement these things in a way that we should. And this is something that we're adding, it's on the agenda tonight, that will be a better platform for customer service. It allows citizens to reach out to the city in the way that they want to reach out. It can be Twitter, messaging, texting, email, and of course, calling, but it will go directly to the person that will solve your problem, and it builds about, it brings about accountability within the city. But if there's multiple people that need to handle the situation, they have all of your information retained so it can be tracked. So, I'm looking forward to this, and it really is a minimal cost for something that I think will bring a high level of service to the citizens. I am really, really excited that our first restore project out of the four that we received from restore funds, we've gone through the process, a panel of picking the professional services team, eight amazing RFPs, which Councilman Conyers was on the panel as well, and we narrowed it down to four, and we'll be announcing the winner of this Friday. Just really, really good proposals. I kind of want to keep them as scrapbooks because they did a great job. But this first project out of four, all of which go directly to the future health of Mobile Bay, will be mainly for a living shoreline, the stabilization of the bluff in the South Park, and will also be incorporating, now, I know ours is steeper, but you know, some sort of seating gallery that will not only be a stabilization project, but a stormwater feature, and just something that all the citizens can enjoy in the future. I'm very, very excited about this project. This is kind of home base for a lot of people, a lot of memories. It's going to involve a lot of citizen engagement to make sure that everybody's input is considered when we try to make this park more accessible and build that relationship for citizens and the bay. So, the next one. This is, you know, something, and I did print the timeline for those that are in the meeting tonight, but I do encourage you to go to my website, mayorkarenwilson.com, because the timeline that I put together on the sewer infrastructure upgrades and the clean water initiatives that started the week I took office, I want to really get out there because we had a pretty clear goal, and when you focus on that, there's about four goals, and never really waver from that, you're able to get to where we are today. And we've gotten a lot done in the last three years. It's just has not been really in the public eye because when you're doing it and you're doing the work, there's not a lot of time to talk about it. And that's why I'm going to have a place here where I can update citizens all the time with progress, because there's a lot that has been done in three years, and it started with my very, much imploring for a sewer study, and that was the first work session that we took office. There's, let's see what else. What I'd also like to make sure to point out is that this is my contact information. Of course, anybody can go to our website and reach out to me on the website, but a lot of information gets out, a lot of misinformation gets out, and oftentimes, it leaves citizens wondering, what's being done? This is a big deal, what's being done? And I'm available. My door is always open, and I do want to talk about the things that we've been doing because that's the big focus of this administration. I understand that Casey Callaway is here tonight with Mobile Bay Keepers, and I just found out that she's here to talk about a letter that I wrote, and I hope that if you say something I need to respond to, that I have time to do that, council, because I sent her an email right after a press release that they sent out, and I know Mobile Bay Keeper knows intimately, you know, all the things that this administration has been doing and pushing this term. And when I took office, I was actually very excited to work with Mobile Bay Keeper because I knew that, you know, my goals and objectives were very similar to theirs. I reached out to Casey one-on-one, okay, and when I didn't receive a response in a week, I decided to send an update to her and her board. This was not to be political, it was an offering to, let's work together for positive things. We want to move positively forward because the things that we're doing, they are positive. If people knew more about it, they would be excited and celebrating the work that's been done. But what happens is a lot of information gets out there without backing up, well, this is what's actually happening to solve the problems. And when that happens, so much time is taken from me and my city employees to react and to, you know, talk to people who are extremely upset. It's an emotional thing. I mean, I think that if we can say anything good that can happen from a national article, you know, that's really degrading Fair Hope, is that the sense of urgency, the same sense of urgency that I've had that actually ran for as mayor, can be shared by everyone, especially, you know, everyone up here, councilmen and everyone else. These are things that, it was no secret when I campaigned, we have to take care of our infrastructure, and after that, we have to maintain our utilities. But when the city is stealing basically over half of utility profits for a very, very long period of time, it's impossible to pay for. Now, we have restore funds, all kind of going to this, $18 million, but this is going to be a lot of money. Then the utilities are going to be able to pay for it out of the profits they no longer have to give to the city to operate the city. Utilities paid a lot of money, up to $6 million a year, to pay for government expenses. An unfair tax to fee payers for utilities. That has been corrected in two years. Okay? This is a big deal. It's not something that I would even be talking about right now, except now I'm going to have to probably have a political, you know, confrontation with Casey now, because when she responded, she included all of council, and I wanted to do this in a way, I ended the letter, and let's do something positive together. Get people excited about a positive movement instead of the constant "gotcha" press releases, you know? I mean, that's not what I'm about. That's not what I want the city to be about. We have positive things happening in the city. I want citizens to embrace this and support it, and I hope that Mobile Bay Keeper wants the same thing. I do have one more proclamation. I also will say, this is the 125th anniversary logo, and where will they be available, Jessica?
At all the facilities.
Oh, at all the facilities, if you want to pick them up. And this is, November 15th is our 125th anniversary. We will be celebrating it up until that point, so you can pick up your decals. And this is the 2020 census proclamation, and if I could get Jean Haig up here, if she's, oh, there you go. I don't have my glasses on.
As some of you know, the 2020 census will be happening in due, the deadline is April 1st, 2020. This census is really critical to the city of Fair Hope. It's how we get funding. It opens up opportunities for, you know, jobs for the city. There's so many things that go into this, and I'm sure you can say a lot more than what I'm saying, but I'm going to read this proclamation, and I do want to just really implore people to be a part of this, to help us get a complete count, because we're a growing city. I do think that the numbers and the estimates that came out, even the 2018 census, are underestimated. I hope I'm wrong. But anyway, this is a proclamation. Whereas the city of Fair Hope, Alabama recognizes that every 10 years, the U.S. Census Bureau counts residents across the country. The official deadline for residents to submit this census is 2020, April 1st. The city of Fair Hope, Alabama is committed to ensuring every resident is counted. The federal and state funding is allocated to communities, and decisions are made on matters of national and local importance, based in part on the census data and housing. And the census data helps determine how many seats each state will have in the U.S. House of Representatives, and is necessary for accurate and fair redistricting of state legislative seats, county and city councils, and voting districts. And the information for the 2020 census and American Community Survey are vital tools for economic development and increased employment, and the information collected by the census is confidential and protected by law. Now, therefore, we proclaim the city of Fair Hope, Alabama appoints the Census 2020 Complete Count Committee, whose purpose is to raise awareness of the importance of Census 2020 by actively reaching out to hard-to-enumerate groups and encourage participation in the census. I thank you for helping us. This is really going to take my robe down. Absolutely. Well, just that would make me a bit, um, a little happy. It's part of the one that's kind of spearheading it for the city, so I appreciate it.
That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item on tonight's agenda will be public participation for agenda items. If you would like to speak to items five through now 21, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, you'll be given three minutes.
This may not be the perfect time, but I figured it was agenda item eight, and then maybe 21, and then Mayor Wilson's opening remarks, but I could also wait till the end if that's more appropriate.
Item eight and number?
Sewage, the two sewage issues.
Okay. We'll have to go with 21.
Perfect. Well, I'm Casey Callaway, and I'm the executive director of Mobile Bay Keeper, and I want to, I want to just kind of clarify a little bit of what the discussion's been over the last couple of weeks with Mayor Wilson's letter to me personally, that I did not respond to as quickly as she would have preferred. There are a number of reasons. Number one, I didn't really understand what your challenge was with what we originally wrote. The reason that I copied the city council, Mr. Rip, Mr. McDonald, and my board on the next letter of response was because most of those folks were in your original email, and I assumed, not your, not the council, but Paul Rip. None of them were on that email. Paul Rip and Matt McDonald were in the original. Matt McDonald, and Jessica, and Richard. That was it. Okay. Well, he had the letter from you, so it was a part of the record. It was sent out on the day I sent his letter. So, all of that was why we put it out there. Forgive me if it was, if it was wrong. I do feel though very strongly that the city council be involved in this conversation for a number of reasons. Y'all all. They could have very well been part of this. Great.
This was done in a way that I felt was very political to be divisive.
I agree it was political and divisive, and I oppose that. I mean, that's not what we are about. Mobile Bay Keeper is an organization that has worked.
I think a lot of people would prefer.
Okay, do you, should I, should I speak, or should I? Just be real quick.
You have four.
Thank you. Basically, while we're here as an organization, Mobile Bay Keeper started in 1997. I'm not going to give you the history. I started in 1998. In 2000, we started working on issues with sewage treatment, sewage spills in the Fair Hope area, sewage capacity all over Baldwin County. We'd already been working in Mobile County on all those issues. This is a priority issue for us. It's a priority issue for our members. We have more than 4,000, 4,500 members, technically, it's probably closer to 5,000 at this point, but I haven't done a good count. Every one of them cares about one thing, clean water. We want to swim, we want to fish, we want to play, and our jobs are dependent upon clean water. That's what we do. So, when I get this email at 8:30 in the morning on Sunday morning, after, with a, what has already gone viral video about what might or might not be sewage in Mobile Bay, we did what we do. I called people, I got on the phone, and when I called the city of Fair Hope, what I realized was I was the first person to make that call. The video was already viral. Nobody knew that they should make a phone call to somebody who they might have thought was the problem. Y'all were not the problem. I don't think you were the problem under any circumstances. We made that clear in our press release. What we did do, though, is point out to the community that just posting something on Facebook is not all, it didn't where the buck stops. You got to go further. You need to make a phone call. If you're in Mobile and you think it's a Mobile sewage spill, you got to call them. If you're in the bayou, you need to call them. You need to call your state agency, you need to call your federal agencies. Friday is this perfect example. On Fly Creek, a neighbor decided to build a boat launch without all the proper permits. We, within minutes, Mobile Bay Keeper residents, the local communities had called the Army Corps of Engineers, they'd called Kim Burmeister. Your offices took charge and fixed it. Well, there's more to do. We all know there's more to do, but the project was buttoned up, there's, everything got solved and fixed in less than eight hours. That worked because people made phone calls. Mobile Bay Keeper is committed to working with the city of Fair Hope, the mayor's office, the city council, the staff, the citizens. We work on clean water. That is what we do. We don't care about the politics. We don't care who likes who, ever. What we do care about is if you don't report a problem, you can't solve a problem. That to us is as obvious as anything in the world, and Mobile Bay Keeper has a large watershed to be responsible for. We work from Mississippi State line to the Florida State line in our two coastal counties. We work on issues in three counties that touch Mobile Bay, and we work statewide on the issues that affect our watershed. So, without reliable community members calling us and saying, "I've got a problem, help me solve it," we don't know there's a problem. It can't be solved if the proper people don't know there's a problem. So, I guess my real goal is to say, we applaud you for all of the work that you've done. I think there are countless opportunities where you can look on your own Facebook pages, on Mayor Wilson's Facebook page, probably on yours, Council President Jack Burrell. Every one of y'all can look on your sites and see, we have stepped up and said, "Go team, congratulations." Frankly, much to the dismay of some of your members, your city, your constituents, who all think we should have sued you already. And y'all have not done anything to deserve that, in our opinion. When we call, we get a response. We cannot praise Richard Peterson more. He works harder than most every other utility member. I'm going to get in trouble for saying that, I'm probably on TV. You have some really good people across the Mobile Bay watershed, but Richard Peterson is phenomenal. He does good work. He's laid out clearly what he needs. Y'all are doing the best you can to get it for him, and only thing we're going to do is keep on encouraging you to get him what he needs. With that, I don't know where there's an argument. I don't know where we have a problem or a challenge. If we ever have a problem or a challenge, or you see something that Mobile Bay Keeper writes, posts, or says that does not support your work for clean water, please don't hesitate to call me. I do not, under any circumstances, believe that our original press release did that, which is why I didn't respond to your original email, but I cannot tell you how many hours I have spent responding to your email, as well as my entire board, who's very invested in this. We work for clean water. We work for you. So, anything that we can do to further your goals, which are also our goals, we're going to do it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I do want to respond to this, that when I reach out, I've been, I've had a working relationship with, with you for a long time. I started the kid triathlon many years ago, which now Mobile Bay Keepers has taken over as a weekend of triathlons in Fair Hope. So, when I reached out to you originally, this was, we already have a relationship. The fact that you didn't call me or respond for a week, I mean, that just, you know, how else am I supposed to think of that? I only want to move forward together. That is crystal clear. But when you respond, and you don't even include the professional letter that I spent hours putting together also, to a council that, I mean, I'm sorry, they're not privy to all of the previous information, then that does become political. We don't have to do these things in a public forum when you could have just picked up the phone and called me.
I apologize. I completely agree. As well, you could have. If you don't have my cellphone number, I will give it to you.
Yeah, let's move on.
Really quickly, I did, I do apologize for not including that. I did send those attachments later on that evening. So, I apologize profusely for not including your letter. It was already out in the world, really public.
Let's move on. Let's move on to the next person.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. The floor is still open for public participation for agenda items.
Good evening. My name is Emily Garner. I'm a resident of Fair Hope, and I'm here to speak just briefly about the ordinance that will be taken up regarding homeless sleeping in their cars. I have to be honest, when I first heard about this, which was really only about a week ago, I'm very late coming into this, and I apologize, you all have been discussing this for several weeks, my first thought was, oh, no. Oh, no. We're going to put people who are at their lowest point in jail, you know? We're going to give them citations, find them, whatever. And I was just so concerned about that. Well, I've done a little homework, and I've had a chance to speak to some of you, and as well as a member of your police force, as well as the director of Ecumenical Ministries, and I feel like I know better the reasoning behind this ordinance. So, I'm not really here so much to speak against the ordinance, because I understand tools are needed, and there might be particular situations that render the police just sort of helpless, their hands are tied, to be able to deal with these situations, but I just, I'm so concerned about the, after this, what happens? What happens to the family that's spending the night in their car in the Walmart parking lot, and they're asked to move on? And I just want to say that I hope that we can continue to have dialogue, meaningful dialogue, with members of different agencies, the city, the police, Ecumenical Ministries, the Health Department, just the agencies that would have, you know, have input and could dialogue together, churches. I can speak for my church, Fair Hope United Methodist. I know we're very interested in helping find solutions for this unfortunate population, but so I commend you, I thank you for working toward this. I understand the police are very compassionate, and I just, my prayer is that they will continue to be very compassionate to these folks, and that we can be part of the solution, coming up with some options for them. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Garner. Anyone else? Items five through 21. I'll close public participation, and we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Boone?
No comment.
Councilman Conyers?
No comment.
Okay. Councilman Robinson?
See, you tried to trick me by going in reverse order.
I did.
And then nobody said anything.
Who said that's reverse, who said that's reverse order?
Still got first bite at the apple here. No, I just wanted to mention that, well, we're all going back to school. Fair Hope Schools go back this week, start on Wednesday, and I just, you know, want to wish our students, our teachers, our administrators, our school resource officers, a safe, happy, and productive school year, and I wish them the best and hope the best for this upcoming school year. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Robinson. I'm going, I don't want to open up another can of worms, I'm going to just address just very, very briefly, you know, my concern for the health of Mobile Bay, and that I'm quietly working in the background to work with some professionals that I'm, would like to bring forth to the mayor and the city council in the future, as soon as I have more information about finding exactly what's causing the high bacteria levels, and instead of just... And instead of just the constant guessing game, our vilifying our city, or our one business, or this or that, I really think that we should find out what it is using a scientific method. Until we find out what that is, we're not going to be able to fix the problem. And I am committed to taking this on, and like I said, it's a little premature now, but to bring this... This would be in conjunction with the testing that Mobile Bay Keepers is already doing. So it would be just additional steps to look at it. And thoughts that I have are, you know, is it... One of the experts that I talked to, they had an issue with having to close the beaches in San Diego, California. They traced it to seagull poop. You know, we know we have a goose population that we are concerned with. I was down at the pier 6:45 this morning, and the pier just north of the public... The large pier was full of seagulls. I'm not saying they're the culprit, but I'm saying that we need to look at everything: boats, aging infrastructure, wildlife, currents in the bay that may be bringing this from other parts of the bay or from upriver. But we are not going to be able to fix the problem until we know exactly what it is. So I hope that the mayor and council will join me, and I'm sure that you will, in trying to... Trying to understand the problem more so that we can fix it, because it is embarrassing when you're named Alabama's dirtiest beach. And unfortunately, that conjures up pictures of garbage, and we don't have a lot of garbage on our beach, but we have some bacteria in our water, and we need to take care of our environment. So with that, I'll close council comments, and we'll move on to item five, which is the final adoption of an ordinance to establish and adopt the policy and procedure for sleeping in vehicles out of doors or in non-residential zones to protect the public health, safety, and welfare with the city of Fairhope corporate limits and its... Within the Fairhope corporate limits and its police jurisdiction. This was introduced at the July 22, 2019, city council meeting. So with that, council, if you would like to speak to this prior to making a motion, or we can make a motion if you so choose, for final adoption, and then we can have discussion. I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
All right, have a motion and a second. Now, discussion. Councilman Robinson, I'll let you go first.
Thank you. You know, we made a small revision to this at our last meeting when we introduced it to remove any kind of restriction on residential camping or any... I think any kind of residential use. You know, and I think this is designed, from the way I understand it with my conversations with our police department, as a safety issue. It's not designed to create any hardship on anyone or to target any particular group of people, but an overall safety benefit for the community as a whole. And I appreciate that that's what it is, and I am in favor of doing that. But just like in anything else, our police use their discretion on a daily basis in determining what to enforce and how to enforce our laws and ordinances. And we have a great police department, and I have no doubts that they will use wise judgment in handling this ordinance if it, in fact, is adopted. But I've got no reservation in moving forward this at this time.
Councilman Conyers?
Yes, sir.
It's always hard to follow Jay.
I know.
He covers everything so well.
I know, and he's well spoken, so. I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of caring and concerned citizens. I agree with Jay. You know, the police department, Chief Hollinghead and the rest of the staff, you know, they're going to use discretion and common sense, and this is going to be something that's going to allow them to enforce when necessary. I don't think they're out to get anyone in particular or anything like that. I will say, you know, as of... The people who've contacted me are mostly concerned about how this is going to be treating the homeless, and I certainly am a supporter in doing what you can to take care of the needy in your community. I think there are a lot of wonderful, caring people in Fairhope. There's a lot of faith-based organizations that help. There's other organizations like Family Promise of Baldwin County. That's a great resource for homeless families with children. I will say, based on the caring nature of our community, most of the people in the homeless situation have been approached and offered help and have chosen not to... Typically, have chosen not to accept it. And I think that that's indicative of the fact that we've got a mental health crisis in Alabama and across the country, and unfortunately, that's being dumped on the police to deal with that. And I don't know that that's necessarily right, but I think in this particular case, this gives the police some baseline that they can operate when they need to, to enforce it, and just for the overall safety of the citizens and well-being of citizens. So I'm in favor of moving forward with it, but I did want to say, I've talked to a lot of very caring people in Fairhope, but I just wanted to mention that they have reached out.
Thanks, Councilman Conyers.
Councilman Boone?
About the ordinance? I feel it's time we've had this ordinance in Fairhope. A lot of issues or problems have come up, and like I say, the police have been... Their hands have been tied with what they can and cannot do. I think this helps a lot towards that effort.
I'll just kind of reiterate what the rest of the councilmen have said, and I want to give a few examples. And I also have confidence in our police to use wisdom and discernment to determine when this law is enforced and when it's not. What it's not intended to do is to harass people that may be taking a nap while they're at work, or even in the evening after a hard day's work, they watch the sun go down at the pier, and they fell asleep in their car, if they want to take a nap in their car for a few hours. That's not what it's intended to prevent. This is not aimed at homeless people, although there may be times when homeless people have to be dealt with per this ordinance, and I can give you some examples. There are times at which we have had homeless people relieve themselves in public areas such as right in front of the library. That's not acceptable, and that will be dealt with, I'm sure, probably with a warning and compassion and discernment, but if that was to continue to happen, that cannot be allowed. And so this gives the police a tool to deal with that. As far as sleeping in vehicles, again, I go back to the Rose Garden area and the pier area again. It's several months ago, back after Hurricane Michael, there were some relief efforts going on in Florida, and they continue to this day. And there was someone that came down to the Rose Garden in an RV, and they parked, and they called all of their friends and said, "You don't need to go to that RV campground. Just come down here. Here's a free place to stay." The Rose Garden's not KOA campground, and so if that was to happen and it was to be a problem, the police have a tool to deal with it. More recently, in the last week or two, the police responded to a call of people sleeping in a vehicle, and Lieutenant Nolte, correct me if I'm wrong, there... When the police responded to a call, there was, I believe, maybe... Were there two people that had warrants out for their arrest?
No, so there were two that were arrested on drug charges, illegal possession of drugs, and a third one that was arrested on that call for illegal possession of firearms.
Okay, two on drug charges, one on illegal possession of a firearm. So without this in place, you don't know who's, you know, who's hanging out where. So I hope that the police are going to use compassion for their fellow man and be humane about how we enforce this, and I have every confidence that they will use their better judgment. I mean, we don't get pulled over and ticketed when we're driving 26 in a 25. Not that I know of, not in Fairhope. There may be... I think I did get a ticket doing 47 in a 45 in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee. So if you're watching this broadcast, I'm still not happy about that. My brakes didn't work after going through the mountains, but anyway, they do use judgment, and I'm going to support this tonight. But if in the future, if I'm on the city council and I see that we're not treating people the way they should be treated, then I'll be the first to change this ordinance or abolish this ordinance. But I do know, also, I believe you did touch on it, Councilman Conyers, that there's been many, many instances where the police are not only helping people that are homeless, but they're on the front lines of helping people that are homeless to get assistance. And I know that they'll continue to do that, and anyway. So I won't repeat everything that you all said, but those are my thoughts. Okay, we have a motion and a second for final adoption. One last time. Any further comments? Okay, hearing none. Clerk, if you'll call the question?
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Aye.
Place three?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number six is an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance number 1357, ordinance number 1380, and ordinance number 1499, and to establish the City of Fairhope Museum Advisory Board and bylaws of the Fairhope Museum of History. Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay. If you would, you should have the bylaws listed for you. If you want to read those over the next couple of weeks, I would suggest that we let this lay over, as we typically do, until the next council meeting to be considered for final Does anybody need any explanations given?
Questions answered.
Okay. Jessica's here if you have any questions, and I'm here if you have any questions. Okay, we'll let this lay over to the next meeting. Item seven is a resolution that city council appoints... Approves President Jack Burrell to negotiate a one-year contract between the Baldwin County Board of Education and City of Fairhope for the county to continue the use of the Pelican's Nest, which is now owned by the City of Fairhope, but being maintained and used by the county for classes, and execute the necessary documents related to that contract. I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I would invite Mayor Wilson to join me in this, and I'm assuming that the reason it was written this way was because I had been involved in the negotiations for that purchase of that property, but Mayor Wilson, I would invite you to go along with me. And it doesn't have to be one year. The resolution states one year. Once we come to agreement, it could be one year, multi-year, whatever we think is best. And we're just going there with a blank canvas right now and find out what Board of Education is thinking. Any other discussion?
Saw Casey Hardman in the audience. Did you have anything to...
Thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Okay, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number eight is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute amendment number one to the Contract for Professional Engineering Services to upgrade the Fairhope Electrical Substations and Distribution Circuitry to cover design engineering work for the addition of the new substation on Morphe Avenue. This would be for the design engineering with steward engineering with a not-to-exceed cost of the amendment of $100,000, which increases the total value of the engineering work to $736,812.50. I'll entertain a motion to authorize the amendment number one.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Peterson's here, if you have any questions for him. Mr. Peterson, I guess I would ask, you did request feedback from the neighbors in the Morphe Avenue vicinity where the Fairhope Avenue substation would be moved. Have you received any response to that?
We've received a few comments about that, and we've done most of the due diligence to address those comments. And at this point in time, of course, Michael's talked to him. I haven't talked to him very much, but I think we've got a pretty good favor for allowing it to be put in, but Michael can address that more.
We've gotten a few comments, a couple of concerns, which I was expecting, which is why I want to do kind of a public forum in the fall to hopefully bring people in from those neighborhoods and talk about the substation and address those concerns.
And we'll have plenty of room to grow that substation in the future if we need to at this site. That's the whole reason we're moving it.
That's the whole...
I think there were some trunk lines and whatnot that were much better facilitated to be...
Right. It accomplishes two things, and let us have some growth in our most heavily loaded substation right now. So we're increasing the size of the transformer that's there, but we'll have an entirely different bay to put a second transformer in the future if we need it.
Right.
And it allows us to create a loop on our subtransmission system that would be much, much less than trying to run a 46 line Bingo Side all the way to Volanta Substation.
Right, that's the part I was trying to remember, the 46. And also, I know that Mr. Peterson had gone to Board of Education and tried to negotiate for the purchase of some additional land at the existing substation, but we weren't... They were... They were unable to sell that because of the growth of the school there.
The retention pond.
Correct. Yeah, they wanted to expand their retention pond for what they have, and now under construction, some additions to that property. And I do want to... You know, we want to make that site look attractive and aesthetically pleasing. We're going to take the stormwater situation that's there now. We're going to try to enhance that. We're going to try to aerate that water. We're going to try to make it so that we are, you know, good stewards of the water that comes into that particular location and exits.
Yeah, now, I was told that that is not designed to be retention, but detention there, which means it's designed to go dry. And so, you know, think about that, and maybe that can't remain that way, but you'll have to talk to the county about that, I guess.
We will.
Yeah. Don't they still maintain that? Is that county maintenance?
It belongs to the city, so I think we're...
Oh, it does now?
The land belongs to the city.
I thought that was county maintenance.
I think they gave it to us so we could maintain it.
Why would we take that? Okay, you know, it's a... The construction cost would increase by a million and a half, and I kind of resign myself that, you know, if we're... The rate that we're growing, and when we look back on 50 years, and 50 years from now, and say that was pretty small cost for the capacity that we can have there, spread out over time is not a lot.
Correct. And, you know, it's... I don't want to tell the citizens that that's the site we're completely settled on. I mean, if we get a lot of pushback, you know, we could look at other sites. I mean, it's the one that makes the most economic sense and most electrical sense to me right now, but I want to present that, too.
Well, that is the part that makes it hard to vote on $100,000 design engineering when we may balk on moving it. I mean, that's a...
Yeah, and this... The $100,000 gives me the ability to present what we're going to do, what we're thinking about doing.
I think with the landscaping we're talking about providing that is on the perimeter of where these people live, and there's already quite a bit of vegetation that separates where the site is with this substation to the neighborhood, I think they'll be more than happy with what we're doing to accommodate what their concerns are.
Yeah, because we're not touching the trees that are there. In fact, we're going to enhance the barrier, the visual barrier, between the dissimilar land uses.
Right.
So...
Okay. Any questions for staff? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second, don't we, clerk?
Yes, you do.
Okay, council. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Item number nine is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized for a contract extension number one of RFQ number PSO 28-18, professional advertising and public relations for the Community Development Department with Hummingbird and South for an additional one year, as per the terms and conditions of the original contract, with a cost not to exceed $4,125. And as Ms. Walker stated earlier, this is for the bi-monthly design of Fairhope Connect, and the printing of the bi-monthly Fairhope Connect will be agenda item 11. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to extension... For extension number one. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item number 10 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized for a contract[1701.76] extension number one of RFQ number PSO 27-18. So I'm sorry, Clerk, these are reading a little funny tonight. Professional Architectural and Urban Design for the Public Works Department with Christian Price Landscape Architecture LLC for an additional one year, as per the terms and conditions of the original contract, with a not-to-exceed cost of $27,900. I will entertain a motion to extend the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Johnson had given us a good description of this in the work session. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item 11 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for extension number one of bid number O27-17, the Fairhope Connect Newsletter Printing with Postmark Inc. for an additional one year, per the terms and conditions of the original contract, with an annual cost not to exceed $14,100. Entertain a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item number 12 is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract for the second and final extension of bid number 26-17, the installation of the seasonal LED lighting with Winterland Incorporated for an additional one year, per the terms and conditions of the original contract, with a total annual cost not to exceed $147,800. I will entertain a motion to execute the contract?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item number 13 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to procure the city's munis software annual maintenance and licensing fees for the IT department from Tyler Technologies as a sole-source distributor and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. And that code states that for which there is only one vendor or supplier contractual services and purchases of personal property which by their very nature are impossible to award by competitive bidding. You may award that. The cost will be $48,804.53. I think we do this every year, Council. I will entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution to City of Fairhope is vote to procure the QSN Q Alert Software, a call center solution for better customer service for the residents of Fairhope for the IT department from QSN Technologies with a cost of $10,600. And the mayor and Jessica gave us a briefing in the work session. And also, the mayor gave us a presentation. And her comments, it was great to get caught up on that. And that's interesting. And I, you know, it's one year. And if you find out it doesn't work, we're not happy with it, well, we don't have to agree to it for another year. So I will ask for a motion to procure the software.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 15 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to procure two 7.5-ton rooftop heat pump units for the Fairhope Museum of History from Mingle Dorfs Incorporated and Crane Rental, the total cost with a not-to-exceed amount of $13,420. And I will say that in the green sheet on this, I believe it is showing as being under budget, but I think that's slightly incorrect. It is over budget by that because it was not budgeted. So is there, who can speak? Richard Johnson, can you speak to that?
Alan.
Just one question. This says two 7.5-ton. Does that, does that museum, does it require 15 tons?
Yes, sir.
Of AC?
It's got two rooftops on it. One rooftop does the front of the museum and the second rooftop does the west side of the museum and the east side. They're divided straight down the middle.
Okay.
You've got one compressor that's got a broke crank in it. We've been running for quite a while on, each unit has two circuits in it. Been running quite a while on one that had some weak valves and everything was fine. When we lost that other one, it's
What's the square footage of the Museum of History?
Don't get me to lying, but I can get back with you.
Didn't I know what that is off the top of my head? Is it 7,000 square feet, maybe? Is it that big?
Every bit of it, I would imagine.
Is it?
Yes. I mean
Really? As I say, that sounds way bigger than it needs to be. I don't know.
Okay. I was just kind of thinking on my own.
We've got, now, thank you.
Think about your old jail space.
Yeah.
You've got a fire department in there with a door open all the time. See where I'm going with that?
I don't know. Chief Ellis, he's saying, "I don't think he's dissing you up here."
Old fire department. The museum fire department with the fire truck in it. It's sitting there. It's got a door open for the public to come in, so we're fighting that as well, so.
15 tons seem like a lot, but the cost is not too terribly bad for 15 tons.
We're going to do it all in-house. We're just buying equipment.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Lance. All right, Council, I'll entertain a motion to procure the heat pumps?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item 16 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to procure the removal of tree stumps and debris for the upgrade of the electrical substations and distribution at Nichols and Young Street with Mason Excavating. The cost will be $14,000. I'll entertain a motion to procure the removal?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 17 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to procure the repairs at Fire Station Number Two on Thompson Hall Road due to the backup of sewage in the fire station due to the excessive rain on July 13, 2019. This is an unbudgeted item. It's been filed with the insurance. The total not-to-exceed cost will be $8,040 from Sealy Quality Construction and Innovations. And I do hear that we have a pretty high confidence level that we will be reimbursed by insurance for this cost. Less small deductible, maybe it's a thousand dollars. It's a thousand dollars, I believe, yeah. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to procure the repairs?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 18 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to procure two line stops and valves in the Spanish Fort area for the Public Works project from RAW Construction with a total not-to-exceed cost of $30,500. I will say this is a budgeted expense. I'll entertain a motion for the procurement?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item 19 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to procure a one-flight model. You can read all that. 20-horsepower pump at Sedgefield Lift Station for the Sewer Department from Jim House and Associates with a total not-to-exceed cost of $15,932 and authorizes procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. This was not in the budget, but is necessary. If you have any questions for Mr. Peterson, I'm sure he'll be able to answer them. If not, I will entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Item 20 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to approve the remodeling of offices for the public works staff in the Maintenance Barn at City Services and Utilities Site as a forced account public works project with a total not-to-exceed cost of $60,000. I will say that this is budgeted and most of the work will be carried out by city employees. Any questions for Mr. Peterson or Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson's raising his hand, if you have any questions. Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to pass this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the remodeling at $60,000. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 21 was added at the beginning of tonight's meeting, and this is the odor control resolution. I'll read this real quick. States be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, that the city council of Fairhope desires to improve the odor generated by the wastewater transmission system and wishes to install an odor control unit, a Wagler company or wager company model number 2050-450 to reduce the odors in and around the Twin Beach Lift Station area to unnoticed levels. This installation will be used to measure the effectiveness of this type of odor control system for possible use on a more system-wide scale and applications as necessary. Furthermore, city council approves the required funding for the odor control unit at an amount estimated not to exceed $10,450. And Council, thank you for bearing with me. You don't have this printed in front of you, so I wanted to read all of it for you. So with that, to approve the funding at $10,450 for odor control, I will entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Next item on tonight's agenda is public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council that wasn't on tonight's agenda, or maybe it was on tonight's agenda, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. Good afternoon.
My name is Helen Hall, and I have property on Henshaw Road. And that, that you just read over, the thing for the odor control?
Yes, ma'am.
On Twin Beach Road. Is that going to eliminate that? Because we've been dealing with that for the past few years. And my concern is, it was a sewage spill there a couple of weeks ago, and it went into what you guys call wetland, but we call it the swamp. And our concern on Twin Beach Road is that we don't see any birds there anymore. So what is going to be done to get that cleaned up? My dad is 94 years old. We've never had that stench like that before. So we need, you know, someone to help us out because, you know, I mean, the city put that thing there. Now, Saturday, I think it was, they bagged some type of orange pump up there, but it still stinks. We wake up, we go to bed smelling that stuff. Nobody, I have been, I don't know if it's legal, but I've been putting signs up and down Twin Beach Road because I am frustrated. Those people that live right across the street, that's not helping their property value, you know? And we need some help with that. The City of Fairhope need to take ownership and clean that mess up. We're tired of it, you know? And so I'm, the thing that you just said about the odor control, is that going to help with that?
Mr. Peterson, with that help in that vicinity, I'm not going to make you a promise. I'm going to let the expert at it answer that question.
That's obvious, right? Oh. And then the odor that we're dealing with is coming straight out of the lift station. Now, we don't know of any odor that's coming out of what you described as the swamp.
Okay, it's coming out of the lift station.
Okay, well, that's the odor we're going to control.
Okay, okay. Well, let me ask you this. It's a lot of homes that are being built over in there. Now, when those homes are added to that sewage?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that pump station going to be able to handle that?
No, we're going to eliminate that pump station with the side stream storage vessel which treats sewer and allows us to back up some during storm events so that the inflow we get in hound into the production plant and we can bring this in behind.
Okay, so all of the sewage goes into that pump station and then it's pumped into the town of Fairhope?
Yes, ma'am.
And when you say all, just in the areas immediately surrounding that lift station? There are how many lift stations?
There's 62, I believe, lift stations in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
What goes into that lift station is coming from the Grand Hotel to County Road. And then when you get east of Twin Beach, it flows towards Sexton Street and it flows up Sexton Street and back down to the South Sexton Lift Station, not across the public works. And then those two force mangers come together at the intersection between Beach and South Sexton.
Okay, so why is it that that pump station, if it's already overloaded, and the new homes that are coming in there that are not there now, they're going to tie in?
That's why we're replacing.
You're replacing the whole pump station?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because I'm telling you, you know, smelling that raw sewage, it can't do anything but lead to health problems. And my grandkids, right here, live right around that curve, and they play outside all the time. And inhaling that stuff, that's not good for your health. So I don't want them five, 10 years down the road starting to suffer with health problems because we're having to deal with mess that we're not even a part of. Because most of those houses down there are on septic, on septic systems, so.
And we agree with you. And that's what, the first step is to get this odor control system in place. And as we grow to the side stream storage vessel, we'll even be doing more.
Okay, so when you say side stream storage system?
It's contained. I know it sounds
It's not a stream. It's just a containment vessel.
And that's to hold overflow sewage?
It's to provide a vessel by which we can back sewage up into it while we're I'm saying.
Where is that going to be?
It's going to be about 400, 500 feet south of Twin Beach Road on RSA Park.
What I'm trying to do in lay terms during the work session, because we talked about this, is that when Richard and I went out to the site, he brought in engineer that is going to put the new system in place for filtering the odor. But the bigger plan for the whole sewer system upgrade and rehabilitation is part of a five-year update. And it has a timeline where it needs to start. It'll start at the sewer plant and work out to all of the sewer lines. So this is going to be an ASAP to hopefully fix that problem. But the overall upgrade and the rehabilitation is going to happen over a five-year period. And it's a lot of sewer lines, but it is happening finally.
Okay, so that pump station is other pump stations in the area.
Yes, ma'am.
So why can't that storage system be put at another location? Why does it have to be put in that area?
Well, because one, we have a problem with that particular lift station already. And the second problem is, that's the best place to capture what comes from Grand Hotel and South where we have inflow issues during storms and that's what we can manage at that location before it gets further into town where there's other inflow issues that we're trying to measure with other upgrades and protections.
I get what you're saying, but
And you're welcome.
Yeah, I'm going to ask y'all to continue this.
It's going to be underground, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, the vessel we're
Yeah, and we've gone, we've been very liberal with our time. We're well over the three minutes. We can continue this and you can, we can go out in the lobby and discuss this or give her all the answers that we can possibly give her. Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, I will close public participation and entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, Council.